For the pledge, you call the meeting order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Brennan.
Honorable Mayor Ron Schaver.
Here.
Councilmember Doug Shasso.
Here.
Allison Howe.
Here.
Clint Anderson.
Here.
Lisa Northrop.
Here.
Kevin Lindham.
Present. First item on our agenda is the introduction of four new corporals within the Police Department.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I'd like to introduce our four new corporals officially to our community and to our City Council. This is the culmination of a two-year project, and we're pretty proud of it. Originally, a couple of years ago, we had four patrol sergeants, one on each shift, and we realized after some careful analysis that we were short of coverage about 33 percent of the time for a supervisor on a shift. And we made the decision that we're going to beef up our supervisory staff using existing staff. And we originally promoted two corporals, and then we just, a couple of weeks ago, promoted the other two. So standing before you is our corporal complement, and we have John Renteria, Ted Tyne, Devin Sheehan, and Jared Unrick. And these are officers that have been promoted based on their training, their abilities, and their job is to be what I call a lead worker, journeyman, supervisor in the absence of a sergeant, assisting the sergeant on duty. And it has turned out to be a very solid program and filling a very necessary void for us. So I wanted to present them to the council, to the mayor, and to our community because I think we're a safer, better place as a result of having extra supervision on the street. And I'd like to turn it over to them real quick if they have any comments. So gentlemen, if you have something you'd like to say. John?
A speech from each.
Just honored for the opportunity.
Sure.
I fell for that last one.
This is, like I said, a very important moment for us, and this will lead us into what we are striving to be by the end of the year, is an FBI Training Center. And these gentlemen here will play a big role in that. We have a Command Leadership Institute program that's been scheduled to come to Fort Morgan. We're excited about that. We did a Supervisory Leadership Institute last year, and that's a trilogy program. And then the third component of that, we're going to try to get that in 2020. So again, thank you for allowing me to present them to you, and we're excited to have the additional level of supervision in the Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
They need a picture of you. Don't leave yet. We need a picture of you. While they're taking a picture, I would just add as the, and talk about what the chief has pointed out, that this is kind of a, somewhat of a culmination of plans that have been in the process for the last several years to enhance leadership as well as training in the Police Department. We're really proud of these guys and their willingness to step up, and it's a new chapter in the Police Department, and appreciate their service.
Okay, so they're all going to stay for the rest of the meeting, right?
Usually, they'll bow out about now.
Kind of what I figured. Well, congratulations to the corporals, and thanks to the rest of you for what you do. Okay, and this is a presentation on a discussion to move forward with the design of the new city complex project using DOLA grant funding and the design firm selected through the RFP process. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Your Honor, and counsel. This is just a follow-up to our meeting a couple of weeks ago where we talked about the history of the city complex project. We spent a considerable amount of time, I won't recover or go back over all that information that we talked about. Just wanted to bring up a couple of, I think, important points about the process. It's been an ongoing process for the last seven years. We've worked with DOLA reps and their process in order to obtain the funding that we now have to move forward with the project. We have a DOLA grant in the amount of $800,000, which gives us roughly $1.6 million total to design three of the components of the complex to 100 percent and several of the other components to a percentage of completion of design. Moving forward with this project would put us back in line with what was provided, or I guess provided to the council through citizen feedback and staff feedback over the last several years. And one of the things I wanted to bring up is, we talked about having Greg Adel come tonight. He couldn't make it. He is in La Hanta tonight, but I had a conversation with him after our last meeting to kind of discuss where things were at with the grant. Our deadline to finish out the grant, close it out, is May 31, 2020. So we've got just about 12 months to get that done. One of the things, and to help, I guess, the council and the community understand, we didn't talk about last time, is that the grant process for DOLA is in three different stages. The first stage is we fill out all the paperwork, and there's a considerable amount of information that we provide them. Those are then determined to be fully filled out and ready to go by the DOLA rep, and once that's put into the hopper, it goes to what's called a pro and con committee. And this is made up of DOLA reps throughout the state. And each one of these reps are bringing various applications from their areas across the state, and this is where the competitive round begins. One of the major components of the pro-con list, and Greg can come back and verify what I'm telling to you as well at another meeting if you'd like him to, is they look at what's called management capacity. Is this community able to, with their leadership, fulfill this commitment that they've made or made commitments in the past? So before we even get to the third step, which is we meet in front of the overall grant award committee, we have to get through that first one. And one of the major things that they look at is their capacity within that community to get a job done, or to get a, to get a grant and meet the grant requirements for the project. An example would be, you know, and I won't name any specific community, but I know in the past there have been discussions where a community might get funding for a new fire hall. And the fire hall takes many, many years to build, a lot longer than the 18 months, because they just don't have the capacity within the community to make it happen, and they didn't budget for engineers and professionals to come in and manage that project for them. One of the big concerns that Greg has, and I guess I have as well, is that if we stall this out and we don't move forward with the grant requirements, we're going to demonstrate that we have a lack of management capacity and leadership capacity within the city, which will hurt us in future grants with the city, with, for the city of Fort Morgan, regardless of who's sitting in your chairs and who's sitting in my chairs. Again, I'm looking for direction today. I'd like to have a direction, whether it's by the entire council or a majority of council, that we need to move forward with this project, or we need to hold on this project, or we're not going to do this project. My recommendation is that we move forward with this project. There's a couple of things that have come up in this process, obviously, that have stalled it. We have a potential initiative that has been proposed by a group of citizens who would like to do something completely different. I know the mayor had meetings with them and at the fire hall, and have talked about, okay, maybe we move forward with this proposed design of adding on to City Hall and move that, and move the fire hall to another place. Again, that is not what we have been talking about for the last seven years, and it's a completely different thing. I'll let our interim city attorney talk a little bit about what has been proposed. They did turn in a proposed, I guess, initiative, and they, obviously, we need to review that and make sure that it meets the requirements. I know that the city attorney has taken some time to look that over and determine whether or not it does comply with the state laws. But I also want to bring up another interesting point about this overall process. Even before we started on the complex, or actually about, even after we started on this complex review, you'll recall that the Fort Morgan Middle School built a new building, and there was a lot of discussion about what are we going to do with the old middle school building? And there was a lot of discussion that the city of Fort Morgan should leave this building and go and occupy that building in order to preserve that building. And some of the people in that group that wanted us to do that or consider that and preserve the historic integrity of the old middle school are the same ones that are here today saying we need to preserve the historic integrity of this building, which we intend to do. The overall cost, as some of you may recall, when the developers of Sol Nosiente came back and looked at that as potentially taking over the school building in order to bring it up to compliance, was about $30 million. So I only bring this up for a couple of reasons. First of all, to point out that we do look at saving historic buildings, we do look at preserving the history of Fort Morgan, and we don't have any intention of eliminating this building or tearing it down or anything that would take away from this building. Obviously, it's part of the process to determine what we're going to do with the building, just like the middle school did. And then I would point out that, you know, the same group, or some of the people in the same group that promoted us going over and redeveloping the old middle school are the same ones that are concerned about the cost of a new complex, of brand-new buildings that meet current standards and are built to a LEED certification at about the same price as it would have been to rehab a building off of Main Street in a whole different location. I think it's important that we make the direction of where we're going to go, for staff, for everybody else. As I pointed out at the last meeting, there are consequences to decisions that you make. Ultimately, it's your decision to make, not staff's. But my recommendation, and I believe staff recommendation, is that we continue to move forward with the direction that we started seven years ago and have been working on. I know there are probably people that have a lot of different opinions on this, and I think that that's important, but I would only reiterate a comment that I made when I was on leave and came in to talk about a direct vote for something like this. In a very recent Times Magazine article, there was a statement that said it better than I did before. It said, "The U.S. is a representative, not a direct democracy. Americans don't expect their leaders to base every decision strictly on their constituents' opinions. They're elected to think for themselves and for their, or for the nation or for the community. They have an opportunity, even responsibility, to help shape public opinion. This is especially true on important questions that affect the community." And I think that you understand what your role is. We're here to support you, as we pointed out, whatever direction you want to go. That's the direction we, we're going to go. But I think it's important to also take into consideration the potential impacts. The only thing that I see that's holding us up now is this potential initiative out there. And I'll turn the time over now to Mr. Wilson to kind of discuss what he has looked into as it relates to this, and then I guess we'll have, answer any questions and have any discussion that you have of me, and then we'll move forward with the direction.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council. Clerk Brennan presented me with a copy of this initiative that was submitted to him for review. The, I don't believe many of you have seen the actual text of this proposal. It proposed that the municipal administrative center development be confined to a different location than the one Mr. Wells was talking about, basically this block that we're in right here. And I was asked to look into the suitability of this particular question for initiative. The initiative power is a form of legislative power reserved by the people in Article 5 of the Constitution. It's the power to propose new laws through a petition process. The Constitution limits this power to municipal legislation, but then doesn't define what legislation means, and this has led, not surprisingly, to a whole body of case law about what is legislative. And the courts have developed a contract. They said, "Some things are legislative where you can, and you can initiate those, and some things are administrative, and those things you may not initiate." Without going too deep into the weeds here, legislative matters are a broad general availability. They establish general standards for all different fact patterns that come under their purview, like a general ordinance, as you would imagine. Administrative matters, on the other hand, are very fact-specific and tend to require a high level of administrative and fiscal and other kinds of skills in order to administer them. There have been a number of cases throughout the recent years where people have tried to use the initiative process in cases similar to what we're dealing with here, where there was disagreement with the city about a particular land use decision, let's say, and the petition process was used to reverse it. The court has held these sorts of things universally to be administrative and not legislative, because they deal with a particular parcel of property and project. And so was my recommendation here, based on all of these court cases, that this initiative is not legislative. It has to do with a particular project, and so it's administrative, and thus not amenable to the initiative process. Sorry about getting a little in the weeds, even when I said I wasn't. What it boils down to is, and I've had a very agreeable conversation with the proponent today about this at her request, and explained that this was in no way a comment on the merits of the proposal, but only upon the narrow legal question of its suitability for the initiative process.
So is there a potential that this initiative can be refurbished or brought back, changed and re-approached?
I don't think so, Mayor. I mean, you know, we talked, I talked with the proponent about that very question, is can you, can you rejigger something and make this work? And it still comes down to, the proponent frankly favors a different location for the, for a lot of the development. And anyway you skin it, it's administrative, which I told her. She, this very agreeable conversation.
I just want to make sure it's not going to come back.
I don't think so. I don't see any way you could do that.
Okay.
So any questions for me, or staff, or Steve, or, sorry, Steve, I'm throwing you under the boat, under the bus there. No, Steve, I can answer any questions, yeah.
So I guess my question would be, is what would be your estimated timeline for the execution of this project? You said there's three buildings that would be designed to 100 percent capacity, and then other buildings designed to...
A certain percentage, 30 or 40 percent.
Right. So what would be the estimated timeframe for completing of the three main buildings? We're talking about the field house, the city complex, and the...
Streets.
Streets Department. What would be like the projected timeline to this, or...
For the design, the total design process is 12 months. We've included significant amount of time to reach out to the public and get public feedback in this process, but the proposal that we've received from the contractor that we've decided to negotiate with is 12 months.
So we're not talking about actually shovel in the ground, we're just talking about simply designs?
This is, this is designs. As far as shovel in the ground, and I'll have to defer to Steve on this, but there is, I believe, we can say we want this design first, this design second. There's an overall design that you've got to do before you start plugging in specific buildings. But once we get the overall engineering design done, then we can say focus on this building, and we may be able to have plans done earlier than 12 months on specific buildings. But the overall design process is planned to be 12 months.
So, but like as far as like an actual building being built, it's going to be significantly longer, potentially two, three?
I don't know if it'll be two or three years down the road, but yeah, it could be. It would be dependent upon council providing the funding to build said building. So it could be as many as 10 years, but the design will be done.
The design will be done.
So 2021, probably at the earliest.
Yeah. But I know that one of the priorities, as we talked about, is the field house.
Right.
And we could focus on that first, and as far as design and appropriations and construction. But we wouldn't necessarily have to build, we wouldn't be looking at building all of those at the same time. We're just having the design ready.
So potentially, we could get the design, but we would be, and then implement the field house, and then it would be up to the council's decision, then whoever's on council at that time, whether or not they wanted to move forward.
With the rest of it. Mm-hmm. That is correct.
Okay, is there going to be any change or issues with the field house, with Morgan Strong's push forward? I mean, since that's one that we are developing, and they've got a really strong role on what they're, they're doing, what impact is that going to have on the design of the field house, to working in conjunction with what they're doing?
Well, I can't speak necessarily to what Morgan Strong is going to do, but I know that in talking with some of their representatives, I think they're fine with us just moving forward with what we're doing. We're going to have a presentation from them in a couple of weeks, and we are working with them here and there to give them information that they request. But it could lead, I mean, we're still part of that, in that public process. We could get members of, of the Fort Morgan Strong group to come into that process and say, "We would really like to see this, this, and this," because, you know, we hope to be able to add on or do something different. So to answer your question, yes, we could still see some modifications of what the field house would be, because we're still going through that public process.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just wanted to reinforce, I know you said the design firm has a pretty robust public engagement process. So if you wanted to, I know that...
My recollection of the, the schedule is that they've got at least three different public engagement meetings where they will come in and specifically talk to the public about their concerns, come back with some ideas, and see if they've addressed them. I'm pretty sure, was it three, three separate ones? Steve, I think, has the specifics on that. And part of that is sitting down with them and letting them, you know, direct, what, what does it look like? And then them coming back with more ideas.
We had no less than five. They definitely were going to come to council a couple of times. There were going to be three specific public charrettes where folks could come in and look at various components of the design throughout the process, and then a couple of other just public meetings outside of city council meetings to, you know, involve folks, so.
Similar to what we did with our comp plan?
Yeah, I wasn't here for that, but I, as I understand, it was very similar. It'll be a very similar process. Now, we've not negotiated the scope, so if there was a desire to have additional meetings, that's when we can schedule those in, right? What we have is a estimated fee with some estimated elements, and that's where we're at at this point. We're ready to sit down and actually define what that scope looks like and what that fee looks like. And so we can add, subtract different elements that you all would desire through that process.
I think the track you were on was pretty good. We'd have pretty open discussion going through the selection process, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
One more, just to reinforce the importance of our reputation with DOLA. So like, just can you estimate for us, over the past 10 years, how much money DOLA's kicked in for different projects?
I can tell you about some pretty significant projects. We get many grants all the time. Some have been $25,000, some have been up to $100,000. Once you cap, get over that $100,000, then it, then you have to go into a Tier 2, I think is what it's called. But our design for the quiet zones was a DOLA project. The South Sherman Stormwater was a DOLA project. That was over a million dollars project, which has really alleviated a lot of the flooding down in that subdivision. We've received money on various design projects. We've received two, money for two different best and brightest interns. We've had a steady flow of money coming this way, and it exceeds $1 million in the last eight years. I could probably go back and get a specific number for you, but I know we've done several projects where they've kicked in a small amount or even a large amount.
Great. Do you have time for one more?
I have all the time.
My last one is just about some members of the community who are worried about the fire department being left out of the planning process, and I know that city staff has not excluded them from the plan, so if you could touch on that.
Yeah, absolutely not. You know, I have regular meetings with the fire chief, and not as recent as usual, because I've been on leave and trying to get things back under. So about every quarter, twice a year, I meet with not only the chief of, fire chief, but I meet with the past chiefs, and we talk about issues in the fire department, things that we can do to make sure that we're planning for them, and, you know, some of the discussions that we've had at some of those meetings, and again, this isn't set in stone, but, you know, when we build the new Public Works and Streets Department, for example, there's going to be empty space back here and buildings that probably will be torn down right next to the fire department. And we've talked about, what does it look like in the future? You know, where does the fire department go? Where do we put things? But there will be space on this site, as well as we look at other sites. A lot of people don't know, there's a fire station on the south side of the tracks over by Cargill. We have two fire stations with capabilities of responding in two different areas if a train blocks the ability to get across the tracks. So they aren't left out of this process, and, you know, one of the things that I really appreciate about the fire department is that they are very entrenched in tradition and history of what they've done and what they do for the city. And we, we are very careful not to step on those traditions that they have established over, you know, almost 100 years of existence in serving the city of Fort Morgan. Part of the reason, when we changed the charter, that they remained separate, was because they wanted to preserve those traditions. So to answer your question, we do not leave them out of the process, but we're also very considerate and thoughtful to making sure that we respect their traditions and what they do for the city.
Thanks.
Jeff, what about the question, the city appears to be abandoning into downtown? You know, that was...
That's a, that's a really good question, Doug, and it's one of the things that we have not done a good job in talking about plans on what we're trying to do with the downtown. At our retreat last week, we talked about some plans that we'd been kicking around for a while, and I think are going to take some traction this year and next year in the budget. But we're concerned about downtown on a lot of different levels. Obviously, there's empty spaces and the concern that, you know, if you eliminate some government offices downtown, you're going to eliminate foot traffic downtown. I think what we need to do is look at different ways to promote the downtown and the businesses downtown, and bring in more business downtown. One of the things we looked at, and we actually changed the zoning, I think, in 2009, 2010, to make it mixed-use downtown, so people actually have the right to develop now their upstairs apartments, or apartments above their buildings. We just have to go through the design phase. So some of the things that we're looking at is going through and doing a full inventory of the downtown, working with businesses and paying for as-built drawings so we know what the buildings are, and then also assisting with the design if they decide they want to put some additional lofts or other things, living quarters within their buildings, that we're assisting with that design and helping them come up with what the prices are. And potentially, as we've done with other types of projects, we can look at some of the development incentives that we provide to private businesses to develop and grow out, because we know that downtown needs more foot traffic, more people. The other thing that we're doing with that inventory is it puts us in a place where we can work with local entrepreneurs and smaller businesses, because we know we're not going to get a Kohl's to come in downtown. The brick and mortar shops are big, Amazon is wiping them out. We have to come up with new experiences downtown. We've had some really interesting ideas by staff that we're trying to develop. One interesting one I brought up at our retreat last week was a parking space garden, you know, create spaces downtown where people can go and sit and congregate and, and talk and other things. And I know that some of the other groups in town have had some ideas that we can work with the chamber on. I know at the most recent Historic Preservation Board meeting, they had some discussions about maybe converting the downtown into a place where you could have a wine crawl, where people go from business to business to business, trying out different kinds of wines. Obviously, we've got to, our role in that would be to assist with the liquor licensing aspect of it. How do we make it legal so they can do that? But if you look at Greeley's Downtown, one of the things that they have done is they've hoarded off a specific block or two downtown where people can go from restaurant to restaurant to bar to bar to nightclub and carry a drink with them. And it's just kind of an open thing on the weekend. So there's, there's ways that we can address the licensing issues to make those things happen. I think our community is very... I think our community is very innovative and have a lot of really good ideas. And I think we just need to come up with a way to help move those ideas in a direction where we can rebuild downtown. I know that Sarah's working really hard with the downtown businesses right now and is looking at also with local entrepreneurs that want to do something where the downtown might be a good fit. So we haven't forgotten the downtown, and I think that's a great question. Thank you.
So downtown park and drive and park, are you talking about bringing back the cruising main for like the high school kids?
Oh, no.
Meeting?
No, what they do in the downtown in Greeley's, they actually shut down the street. They, you have to... It's just pedestrian. People can only walk within those areas. So there's some things that, where we'd have to set the premise and where is the premise gonna be? And then, of course, it has to be secured. So that's why they actually have, I think, a gate that swings over so no cars can go downtown and it's all pedestrian on the weekends. But we could do something like that or different. You know, the other issue that you run into for special event permits is it has to be sponsored by a nonprofit agency. So you'd have to have a nonprofit that actually ran the event in order to get the special use permit, unless you had private companies downtown. And we have several bars downtown that may participate in something like a wine crawl or, you know, whatever it is that they want to do. So there's a lot of really good ideas and I think it's just working with the people to develop those.
Similar to what we did with, well, not what we did, what was done with Pedal the Plains? When they had their organization that did the beer garden setup that was, you know, outside of the elk lodge where we normally have the beer garden, so.
Yeah, yeah. And I think you'll see some of those ideas, new ideas, changing how things look downtown, so.
Well, and I think that when you go to other small towns personally, when I've gone there, that most of the downtowns anymore that are thriving are not brick and mortar. And I think, just as you'd said, brick and mortar's come by the wayside. I think it's becoming more experienced as far as restaurants and coffee shops and ice cream parlors and that sort of thing. But I also have seen, just as you were talking about with developing the stores, more lofts overlooking that and everything. And of course, a lot of people that like to live in lofts now, and so, you know, that's twofold. It puts more foot traffic on Fort Morgan and it helps with their housing. Just as an aside, where we were talking about that, and I didn't know that the city complex would bring that much foot traffic or anything else, but I had a former firefighter who's retired call me and said, of course, he would back whatever the fire department said now, but he said, as far as moving the fire station out there, he said, instead of having a busy restaurant across the street, now you have to go past the police department, the sheriff's department, the courts, the Greenacre School, the daycare, and everything else. So he thought it'd be a lot more risky from that standpoint and everything too with moving it, not to mention that it'd probably add about $15 million because we have to build a new fire department and tear this one, that one down, so.
And I think that there'd be a lot of administrative, as Jeff pointed out, a lot of administrative studies to determine what we do with the old fire department, where we locate it, and, you know, the cost of rebuilding it. And I don't know what that cost would be, but I know, I think somebody contacted Kersey, which recently put one up in the last decade, and I think theirs was about $15 million or more to build that.
Way less than that. Colga was a big portion of that.
They had a lot of private people pay in parts of it.
Colga was, Colorado Oil and Gas was the big
Contributor.
contributor for Kersey, so, I mean, that was oil and gas money for Kersey.
All right. Any more questions? I'll leave it to you to give us direction. Thanks.
Okay.
Well, personally, I think that, especially now that it sounds like we don't have the threat of having to revamp in the middle of it in November, I think it sounds like the thing to proceed because, of course, the main reason we were doing this and trying to move along quicker with it is because we wanted the fieldhouse to get built because not only did we feel like the kids needed more and everything, but we were worried that the armory was gonna come down about our ears and everything too from the state of the building, so.
And I think by no means, I mean, it's the same thing I said when we had our last meeting. I would really like to see the initiative committee people come to the table with the designers and the firm and let's utilize these meetings that we have, these forums. Let's come together as a community, work together as a community to design what we need to do with everybody coming in with an open mind. And that would be my encouragement. I think, I think we're moving forward. We're not putting in stone, getting rid of anything. We're by no means being disrespectful to historic preservation and historic preservation buildings. That's not our intent at all. And I think we have an opportunity to show and be a bright shining star of how we can work together as a community and get past some of what's happened up to this point.
I would agree. I think working together and having an open mind both ways is gonna go a long ways, so.
That's very true.
With that, I would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I would offer a resolution to move forward on the decision with the design firm that was selected on the new city complex project using DOLA grant funding.
Second, do you want Kevin to have it?
Okay, I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Kevin Lindell, both by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Next is a presentation on possible acts on approving a contract for the sale of Legion Park property to the Morgan County RE3 School District and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract, Mr. Wells.
Thank you, your honor, for your consideration tonight. Is obviously a resolution authorizing you to follow through with the contract, which would divest the city of the ownership of Legion Field and move it over to the school district's ownership. And I think there's a lot of benefits to the community as well as to the city and the school district in doing this. We've also worked with them with some of the issues, obviously, that have come up, where do we put our snow? We've got some pretty big mountains of snow over there right now. And we will be, we'll be having, we've got that pretty much worked out on where we will, they will provide us a spot to take that snow in the event that they don't want us to drop it there anymore or they develop something there. So it's been a very good process with Dr. Hammack and the school district. And I think the school board has approved the, have they approved the?
I think that's coming up at the next
That's coming up the next meeting?
April meeting.
Okay. So what we're waiting for, I guess, is for them to say they're good with it and we're getting authorization for the mayor to sign it once they're good with it, so.
So when, so it's not a done deal, done deal?
Until the mayor signs.
Well, the mayor can sign, but the school board still has to do their piece, correct?
Once the school board approves it, then
Correct.
You can come back and I
But I just don't want people to think that, you know, when we do this tonight, that it's done. But once it goes to the school board
It's a little more complicated because it's got two boards or two
Right.
entities.
Entities to wrestle with. All right, Nelson.
Everybody's stepping back.
Okay. I would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I would offer a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract of sale for the transfer of Legion Field to the Morgan County School District, RE3.
Second?
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Allison Howe, both by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is a presentation on bids for pool house repairs at the swimming pool.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Hi.
Thanks for having me tonight. Basically here tonight to ask for your approval to move forward with pool house repairs. It came to my attention a year ago, right before we opened the pool house for the 2018 season, I did a walkthrough with staff and realized we needed to do some work in there. And as most of you know, my main goal with the golf course or any of our facilities are to keep improving and do what we can to give the best product to our citizens, so. Staff and I got together, we kind of put together a priority list, included floors, new fixtures, toilets, urinals, some plumbing work, privacy curtains on the showers, toilet stalls. Went out to bid on February 20th. With the help of Colette and Steve, we put together a bid and went out on the 20th. Had a pre-bid meeting on the 27th. At that point, it was pointed out that we possibly needed a new water heater. So we did an addendum and added the water heater and some other details to the bid process. Opened our bids on March 8th. We had two companies that showed up to the meeting and also bid. One was Ruples Plumbing, one was Quad County. It quickly came to my attention that we couldn't afford to do everything we wanted. And by adding the water heater, we were gonna lose some of our other priorities, which one of the main priorities was repainting the floor with an epoxy paint. We also wanted to get new mats, anti-slip mats to go on the new floors. So we removed the water heater from the bid. Both companies gave us itemized bids and we've contacted both companies about that and they agreed that was fine. So tonight, we're asking for approval of the Quad County Plumbing bid minus the water heater for $10,175. We're also gonna be painting the floors with, which the Parks Crew will take care of. And we're gonna order new floor mats, so the total project should stay under the $20,000. That was budgeted in capital for this project, Conservation Trust, excuse me. Any questions?
I'm just, yeah, I think it's awesome that our Parks Crew can do that for us to save some money on the, so we don't have to pay an outside company to do it.
Yeah, we did get quotes on doing the floors and we wouldn't have done anything else, so.
Oh, wow, okay.
It's a huge savings.
So when you're swimming this summer, make sure, yeah, you high-five anyone you see that's Parks Department for helping out with that.
Safely and securely.
Yeah.
And the reason we were able to do this, am I correct, just reiterating, is that because we had some money left over after we were doing the
No, this is separate. This was budgeted separate in Conservation Trust dollars with the sole intent on cleaning up the pool house. I'll be honest, all the fixtures, the toilets and urinals were so stained that it was pretty, not very nice-looking. So this should be a great improvement. We're replacing all the toilets, brand-new fixtures, redoing the urinals so that one of the urinals will be ADA compliant. We're removing two drinking fountains on the outside of building and putting in one refrigerated drinking fountain that'll be ADA compliant. Curtains on all the showers. We have an issue with putting stall doors on just because there's limited space in there. So we're actually gonna do a curtain system on the stall door so that there'll be some privacy. It'll be a super heavy-duty rod. And that way, the curtains can be replaced. When they get grimy and gross, we can get new curtains and have a lower expense that. Painting the floors, new mats. The PA system is a separate project. It's being worked on right now, and that's the one we're sharing with the band show.
I realized that after I brought it up.
And this will be done prior to the start of the summer season?
Yeah, it should be done. I think our lifeguards need to get in for training and practice on May 6th, so we're shooting for that. If we're not there yet, the lifeguards can come and go through the gate while the crew is still working. It shouldn't be too big of a problem. That's our goal anyways.
Any other questions for Mr. Hamer? I would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I offer a resolution to accept the bid from Quad County Plumbing for $10,175.
Second? I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Doug Sauschow, both by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you for that one. Next is presentation on bids for procurement process for the bike park design and installation. Mr. Hamer?
All right, so hello again. I'm here tonight to seek approval to, a couple of things, to move forward with what I'm calling Phase One and Phase Two of the bike project. And also to seek approval to use the equivalent of a state bid process. It's called Sourcewell. It's a buying group. Tried to explain it in the memo as best as I can. But to backtrack a little bit, a lot of you guys understand the project, it started in 2016. Josh Miller had done some work. The group, American Ramp Company, also known as Progressive Bike Ramps, actually came to town, did some public meetings, got some input. And we had a beautiful design for a skateboard park, a bicycle playground, and a bike park. I don't know what happened, you know, this was all before my time. All of a sudden, we had a skateboard park designed and built by Evergreen Skate Parks. That was completed towards the end of 2017, beautiful skateboard park. The skateboard park was in a completely different location than the original concept design. We, I got excited about the skateboard park. Started looking around the property and realized we have a lot of open, empty space that really needs some touching up. And I think Brenda Joy Park has been kind of a focus for several years because it is a big park and it's kind of underutilized, undeveloped. So if you remember, Daniela and I started working on a GOCO mini-grant. Last year, we were awarded that mini-grant on March 6th of this year. I immediately was back on the phone with American Ramp Company, started finalizing design plans. We have basically come up with three different phases if we would like to continue this way. The first phase, I think I put a, did I put a map in your packet of the actual design? So anyways, the GOCO grant is $45,000. We had originally budgeted $60,000 in Conservation Trust for this project. And our match for GOCO is 15. So Phase One would be a $60,000 project, would include the jump line, which goes along the north side of the pond, right along the north side of the property, and will connect to West Street. If we could, I would like to continue with Phase Two of the project, which will be more of a beginner's trail as well as a technical trail that'll go through the trees. That would be the east side of the park, right, Mr. Mayor? Kind of the east-west corner? Or, excuse me, east-south corner? If we could get approval tonight to go ahead and do both phases. Phase One, $60,000 GOCO project. Phase Two would be the remaining $45,000 out of the Conservation Trust money that was already allocated. The big kicker is during this whole process, talking with American Ramp Company, it was explained to me that they were part of a Sourcewell contract. Sourcewell is the equivalent of a state bid. We're pretty confident it satisfies all of our procurement policies, any requests for proposals, that kind of thing. As well as two other Colorado cities have recently used them. Superior and Bennett, Colorado have both used the Sourcewell contract. So with that said, we're hoping to move forward and move forward quickly. We want to get on the calendar for these guys so that we don't get pushed back to the end of the summer or into the fall. I think if we could move forward, we could have something in the ground and ready probably mid-July or end of July. Very excited about the project. Actually, rode my bike to the skateboard park on Sunday. Tried to kill myself on that thing a little bit. Looking forward to killing myself on the new park. But as you can see in your map, it'll be really neat. There'll be a trail system, there'll be ramps, there'll be features, balance beams, BMX features. The BMX features are included in Phase One as well. I did print a bigger map, if that helps. If I can find it.
So Ty, what we're approving tonight is the funding for Phase One and Phase Two?
Yeah, so I'm seeking approval to spend $105,000. $60,000 GOCO project and the additional 45 that will be left in our original account. I want, you know, I'm trying to save money. If we do it all at once, we're gonna save a lot of money on shipping. We automatically get a 7% discount. We automatically get a 7% discount if we jump on the Sourcewell contract and use their bid process. And then we also get free shipping. So it's equivalent of almost 10% discount. I think his numbers were almost $12,000 savings.
Right.
I don't know if this would help, but that's kind of what, all of this right here will be Phase One. And then this will be Phase Two. And in the future, if we decide to, we could put a pump track in on the actual park area as a Phase Three. The pump track is pretty cool. They're prefabricated. They're, I don't even know what they're made out of, but giant pieces of plastic. The Parks guys can actually build them. They bolt together. It would be the type of thing that could be removed come winter time and stored during the winter. It could also be dismantled and moved to City Park for events at City Park, things like that. They're pretty, pretty cool. Expensive piece. The pump track by itself are like $45,000. But that would just be an option possibly in the future.
The black portion that you had, or picked your pictures in here of?
Yeah, at the very bottom.
Something you can tip yourself on?
That one probably not as much as maybe some of the others.
Do we have video evidence of that? Because I'd like to see.
Well, but see, I'm the, I'm the cinematographer, right? So.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah.
Can we put a GoPro on you?
You could, sure. I've actually started looking at a new bike. They make special bikes for these things, so I'm already looking at a new one.
They have two wheels on the back.
There are two wheels on it.
Be good for social media to have some GoPro footage.
Jeff, did I forget anything?
No, no, I think you did a great job. Thank you.
So part of the, like Phase Two is going to be these wooden racks and that?
They're, they're, the structures are made out of steel frames and, and wooded, wooden top surfaces. The beauty of it is, in the future, if we need to replace planks, it's very easy for the Parks guys to replace planks. What we're going to do is a supervised install. So this company is not going to actually, you know, come in with their bulldozers and tear the park apart. Our crew will be doing the dirt work and assisting with the install. They'll just send a supervisor to make sure that we're doing it to meet all the requirements and make sure it's as safe as possible.
These are the pump tracks?
That's a pump track, yep. There'll be a pump track on April 13th at the Supercross at Mile High Stadium. If you want to see one, this company will actually be there giving a demonstration. I might be able to get tickets. I might have already gotten some tickets, so it just depends.
For the Supercross?
I think you get into the party, the pit party and the Supercross.
I'm not going to be excited about that or anything.
Um, what was I trying to say though? I completely forgot. Oh, all the features are the steel and wood planks. Some of them are ramps. The, where you see the jump line, some of those are three-foot ramps, some are four-foot ramps. And they'll actually be embedded into a mound of dirt and then there'll be a tabletop and then a landing zone. You could do it with gaps where, where there's actually, you know, a three, four-foot gap where a person like me could really kill themselves. But with the tabletop, it'll be a little bit more safer, which I think will be better for those of us that are trying to, to learn to ride.
So there's head nods from the gentleman that are behind you. I think they think that would be kind of.
Are they excited? We're also hoping to, in a couple of weeks, you're going to meet your Fort Morgan Youth Commission. And I'm hoping to help them help me get some of the other kids involved, some of the BMX community kids. Either to, you know, just have a meeting to go over the design ideas or possibly have them out there when we're actually starting to put these things in the ground so they can kind of participate and see how it works.
Cool. Great work on the grant and all your research to make it safe and cost-effective.
We're, we're very excited. I'm really excited about it.
My big question is, what did you do with Parks Department to get them to volunteer to do all this?
Actually, so.
Be like, you really got them doing a lot of labor.
So Jerry and Jorge are really fired up. I think they're ready to do something creative and they've already been to the park and started cleaning up some of the dirt. So I don't think it'll be a huge crew. Couple of guys and a machine. Will probably want to bring in some additional dirt, which we were able to grab from the FedEx building when they were doing their stormwater ponds. So we've got a pile of dirt already that we can move over there. The crew's pretty excited. I talked to Doak about it. He feels like they can, they can handle it, so. Of course, they're so awesome, you know? Their standard answer is, we can do it. So, pretty good guys to work with.
Any other questions?
Nope.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept, or to give approval for Phase One and Phase Two and accept the contract with American Ramp Company with their encompassing Sourcewell contract and pricing not to exceed $105,000.
Second? I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Kevin Lindell, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Good job, Ty.
Thanks.
Next is a presentation on bids for the 2019 Water and Sewer Infrastructure Projects Information.
Hello?
Good evening. I'm going to make this a little quicker than Ty just because I've been having one of those nasal colds and so I won't last very long if I talk that, that long. So this is pretty much just our standard, trying to stay ahead of Steve and his tearing up all the streets. We got about a little over 6,700 lineal feet of water line that we want to replace this year and a little over 1,400 feet of sanitary sewer line that we're going to replace. When we went out to bid, we did have the unique pleasure this year of having all local contractors bid on these projects. We did have a couple out-of-town people show up to the pre-bid meeting but didn't turn in bids, so, which was a little bit unusual for us. So looking at the water side of it first, because of the amount of pipeline that we're looking at replacing and the schedule at which Steve will probably talk to you a little bit about when he comes here, talk about asphalt, we feel the need to go ahead and award contracts to two of the bidders on this. And so based upon their experience levels, we've had experience with both of them. We have a little more experience with Ransom Boones Group than we do with the other one, but we have worked with the other one. We do know he's very capable of getting the work done. So there was a couple of factors where we wanted to go ahead and split the water bids like we did. And so, so what you're seeing in front of you is we've got a request to go ahead and, and go with our low bidder, Darren Nebb Excavating, and give him, as you see in the, the memo, projects B, B1, and C. And then we want to give the other water projects to Ransom Boone Excavating. And I might have done that backwards. Darren gets A, D, and then Boones get B, B1, and C. And then we also incorporate, since this is all underground work, we do the sewer bid all at the same time and give them the opportunity to bid the same things. The Just Backo bid, they're traditionally our lowest. They're kind of our go-to guys when it comes to sewer work. They're just more used to dealing with replacing sewer lines and what you have to go through to do that. And so I think that's why the, most years their bid is usually the lower bid. And so in this case, they're, because of the limited amount of sewer line, they can stay ahead of the asphalt jobs just by giving them, single-handedly. So, so we basically end up giving everybody a little bit of work to do and hopefully be able to stay ahead of Steve's asphalt schedule and everything. So I won't read it to you, so that's what we're looking for, is getting approval for all three of those companies to do our water and sewer stuff this year. Be happy to answer any questions.
Good to see all local companies and it's nice to spread the wealth out a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely. And these aren't our only, we have a couple of other, we have some smaller, much smaller projects and then we kind of, a couple of other water line projects that we've got to do separate bids on that will be coming back at a later date. So we've still got more to tear up this year.
So the sewer project is at Sherman Street also?
Um, the majority of that is over on West, uh, Seventh Avenue. And then there is a small section of it on Sherman Street that we're going to do.
Okay. You don't say that would be tough, tearing up the street and the alleyway.
Yeah. Yeah, there's going to be a lot of coordination and we've, of course, have the, depending on the location where we start and everything, on Sherman, we have two schools that we have to work around that is going to cause a lot of, a lot of, it's going to be fun. Me and Steve will have fun this year.
Schools are very inept at this. They can handle it.
Yes.
There's, there's never traffic on Sherman.
Oh, no. No, that's, that's light.
The eyes have asked and overcome.
Yeah.
Or West Street.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there's only 180 feet on Sherman that we're replacing, so.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution approving the bid from Ransom Boone Excavating in the amount not to exceed $167,800 to complete the water portion of the 2019 Infrastructure Projects E and D. To accept the bid from Darren Nebb Excavating to complete the water projects B, B1, and C in the amount not to exceed $195,630. And to accept the bid from Just Backo in an amount not to exceed $173,110 to complete the sewer portion of the 2019 Infrastructure Projects E, F, and G two.
Second? A resolution by Lisa Northrup, a second by Clint Anderson, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brent.
Thanks.
Next is presentation on bids for the 2019 Ibatumenes Payment Project.
That word.
And Chip Seal Projects.
Easy for you to say. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This is our annual Fix the Roads that Brent tears up with his utility work project. We're pretty excited to be back for our second year of Strictly for Streets. Last year, we fixed just under four miles of roads with chip seal and repave, and this year, we've got just under five miles. So we're pretty excited to add another mile. We've got $3.1 million that we're estimating to spend this year. The sales tax estimated to be 2.2 million, so we're paying that forward. And then, of course, we have the $900,000 that we've historically had in the budget that we add to that. That's where we get the 3.1 million. Staff worked hard to come up with a project where we could spend just about all of that money. I think we've done that, as you can see in your packet. And we've got about three miles of new pavement that we're doing and just about a mile and a two-thirds of chip seal work that we're going to do this year. I included the map in your packet. Maps are on the website. We've tried to get those out to social media and various other places so folks are well aware of what we've got planned for this summer. Bidding was very, very tight this year. Was really surprised that the top two bidders were within 1% of each other. So that's $30,000 on a $3 million project. You about can't get closer than that. That's, in my 26 years of doing this, that's one of the closest bids I've ever seen. We spent a lot of time reviewing those in detail because they were so close, trying to make a decision. Of course, we worked with Simon Contractors last year. Very pleased with their work. They were right there in the, in the bidding process. Martin Marietta was the low bid. We have worked with them in the past here in Fort Morgan. I don't have any experience with those folks, but JW does, and he's very pleased with their work in the past. So we're going to go ahead and request approval to award the paving portion of the project to Martin Marietta. Chip seal work, we got two bids on that. They were pretty close, within 10%. That's, that's good bidding as well. A1 Chip Seal did all of the chip seal work last year. Very pleased with their work. Again, they're the low bidders this year. We certainly don't have any issue recommending approval to A1 Chip Seal for the, just under two miles of road. We are going to ask, like we did last year, for a bit of a contingency. We didn't have to use much of that last year on the road work. We used none of it on chip seal. We did use a little on the paving. But we did end up using the additional funds that we had for concrete work. As you know, when we repave a road, we're required to bring those ADA ramps up to standard. We do have money budgeted for that. There's quite a little bit to do this year, so we, we think we'll be okay. But we also want to have a little room to move should we come into some issues, you know, when we get into Sherman and some of these other roads where we're grinding that asphalt clear out and, and sometimes you can encounter some soft soil. So what staff's requesting is that we would award the contract for paving to Martin Marietta Materials in an amount not to exceed $2.83 million. And then award the chip seal project to A1 Chip Seal in an amount not to exceed $190,000. And both of those together are still within our $3.1 million budget. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Oh, I should talk about schedule. I'm sorry. They do plan to start as soon as weather breaks and, and they can get started. We do have a lot of schools to work around this year and so we'll try to, you know, first of all, let Brent get ahead of us with, with the utility work. There's quite a little bit of utility work to do. So I think Martin will be in here mid, end of May-ish and they want to be done before summer's out, before school starts back again. Chip seal work is really just about a two-day project, surprisingly. That goes very, very quickly if you watched it last year. So we've just given A1 the, the authority, once it's awarded, to just move at their, at their schedule, but they'll be in and out before you even see them, so.
Once again, chip seal is kind of a protective coat you put on a surface that's pretty good to just help preserve it, correct?
Yeah, yeah, great question. It's a surface treatment, protects that surface that's in generally pretty good shape. You try to do a surface treatment on a road, a brand-new road every five years, that protects it. If you do that three times, then the fourth time, it's usually time to mill and overlay it again. So lifespan of a typical road's 20 years, three surface treatments, and then you're into your 20th year, the fourth time that comes around, so.
Can you help me understand the process of how you choose which or how a ramp gets put in that category that it's going to get kind of a makeover and be up to code with ADA regulations?
Yeah, anytime we mill asphalt, we don't have to do it when you put a surface treatment on, but if you overlay a road, mill and overlay a road, reconstruct a road, you're required to bring those ADA ramps up to standard. So the chip seal roads wouldn't see that work, but anything we're touching with new asphalt would require that.
Thanks.
Any other questions? I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept, the first bid is for Martin Marietta Materials not to exceed $2.83 million, which allows for that 10% contingency, and also approve the bid from A1 Chip Seal not to exceed $190,000, which also allows for a 10% contingency.
Second? Who got the second, Lisa or Kevin?
It don't matter, Kevin can have it.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Kevin Lindell, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next is presentation on bids to repair a 60 cent, 66-inch storm sewer line. Mr. Glanmer?
Okay, this is a year for large culvert failures, I guess. At least the winter was. You remember, we talked about Riverview Avenue and the big culvert that went under that. We're actually extending that because of some failure we've seen on the shoulders. Well, we also experienced a pretty good failure in the 66-inch storm line that heads over toward the city's waste facility. And this has created a pretty large depression in the ground out there. If you've been out behind there, pretty big hole. We've been watching it all winter, but we haven't been able to get in there and actually see what happened until recently. It's, I mean, the weather's caused us some issues and we were finally able to get a contractor in there to actually drive a camera up and down that pipe and see what we had, see how much of a failure we had, how much work we needed to do to repair it. Turns out, the failure's in the middle of two other repairs that we've made in the recent past. So we've got about 180-foot-long section that is older pipe that we're planning to just remove and replace, attached to those two other new clean sections that have been repaired. And that should fix the problem. We were not able to drive the. contractor in there to actually drive a camera up and down that pipe and see what we had, see how much of a failure we had, how much work we needed to do to repair it. Turns out, the failure's in the middle of two other repairs that we've made in the recent past, so we've got about 180-foot-long section that is older pipe that we're planning to just remove and replace, attached to those two other new clean sections that have been repaired. And that should fix the problem. We were not able to drive the entire pipe. I was hoping we could, so that we could determine if we've got other areas. So our intent will be to get this section repaired, flush it, because there's a lot of soil in there now, particularly because of the hole that we've created, and then try to drive that entire section and see what we've got. Interestingly enough, when I was reviewing the video of how much we could see, we couldn't quite get to the ditch crossing. There's a large ditch that we go under. The mud was too much, but we got close enough that we could zoom in, and they actually left a trolley cart inside there when they were building that storm drain. So we're going to go retrieve that once we get things cleaned up. So it's been collecting a little bit of debris over the, I don't know, decades. I'm not sure when this thing was built, but it's been in there ever since they built it, so.
It's taken for the museum.
Yeah, right. So we'll get down in there, we'll collect that thing out of there, clean the debris out, clean this whole pipe, and then we're going to drive the entire thing and just see what we've got. I'm concerned that as we start to see these failures, the section under the ditch, it concerns me greatly. I want to make sure that, you know, we need, if we need to get in there and repair that, then I want to get that done over a winter time when we can actually excavate that and do that. But tonight, we're looking for some funds. This is unbudgeted, unfortunately. It's just one of those things that's happened to us, and we didn't know what we were looking at, so we're asking to spend some money out of reserves. Fortunately, we have that money. The material, we did get two bids on, and the low bidder's $22,496. This is DBE Manufacturing. And then we're asking that you would award that price, and then also an additional $40,000 so that we can get an on-call contractor in there to excavate and install this pipe for us. It's just too deep for us to do it in-house, but we'll use our on-call contract to make that happen. So total award would be, you know, $60,000, $62,000, $63,000, so.
So is this the steel corrugated pipe?
It is, yeah. And I think, you know, when we get the chance to drive this whole thing and see what we've got, if it's in good shape, there's a process that we've been looking at where you can actually coat the entire inside of the pipe with concrete. And we watched that process down in Denver recently, and we've got a company that would be interested in looking to do that, and so they essentially just drive a machine that flings, you know, gunite, if you know how they build pools. It's the same material, so they just fling gunite on the inside of that pipe, and that would probably preserve it for many, many years without, you know, reducing the capacity too much. So that's one thing we're thinking about doing, if we don't need to replace pipe, so.
And how soon, obviously, we have to let winter go away for a little bit?
Yeah. Yeah, I think we could get in there and dig now. It's plenty moist over there, and I think they could get in there as soon as we can get the material on site and get that done.
If the ditch started leaking into the pipe, wouldn't that just help our augmentation plan?
It would. I'm not sure they would like that, but.
Unfortunately, we meet her further up, so we wouldn't get credit for it. We just make a whole lot of farmers upset that we took their water.
Don't need that.
That's a fact. Would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept the bid for materials from DBE Manufacturing for $22,496, and also approve the expenditure for an on-call excavating contractor not to exceed $40,000.
Second. I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider approval of the final plat for the Phoebe subdivision. This is a public hearing. Please keep public comments to the issues before the council. Each speaker is asked to limit comments timed to three minutes unless a speaker represents a group of citizens, in which event additional time may be allotted. Please respect these limitations. I reserve the right to limit public comment that is inappropriate under these guidelines and otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony or questions that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, or not pertinent to the issues, and set a time limit on the duration of testimony if I determine necessary in light of the number of persons who have signed up to testify. First is the issue of a legal notice. Was the hearing properly noticed, Mr. Brennan?
Yes, Your Honor. A legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on February 28th.
Next is presentation of the application. Mr. Glennmeyer.
Okay, you've seen this before. This ought to look really familiar. This is the third step in the process of creating lots for sale. We've seen this, well, you've seen it twice. Planning Commission saw it three times. They see a sketch plan. You all see a preliminary plat, and then you see a final plat. So this is final plat. This creates the document that will record with the county, and that creates the lots that we can further market and sell to folks that may be interested in those in the future. It creates the right-of-way for the roads that we need to build, and the easements for the utilities that we'll install. The city's the developer of these properties, and so we're at the final step, and Planning Commission saw this at their meeting on Monday, recommended approval to you all tonight. We've received one comment, and it was from the county. They wanted to make it very clear that they had ownership of County Road R, which is adjacent to one of those parcels. We've added a plat note to the plat that makes that very clear. Their attorney has drafted that language. We just included it on the plat. So very clearly, they will be owners of County Road R adjacent to that Block III piece that's down there to the south. Other than that, we've got no comments on this, and would recommend approval of the final plat. I have the Mylar in my office ready to record if you all are happy with it, so.
I guess we don't need to worry about the applicant addressing council.
He can sit around.
Do they wish? You want to address us, Mr. Brennan?
No.
No, thank you.
Is there anybody that wishes to speak on this issue?
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no one, I would ask the city clerk if any oral or written comments were submitted to your office prior to this.
No, Your Honor.
Here. Counsel discussion. Are there any questions or discussion from the council?
Nope.
Covered this one. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'm moved.
Second. I have a motion by Lisa Northrup and Kevin Lindell, second by Kevin Lindell. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign.
Attorney and counsel, you've had this matter before you previously. This is a final approval of the plat. The appropriate action would be approval by resolution.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution on approval of case number 19-001, S. Phoebe Farm Final Plat for a major subdivision.
Second.
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Allison Howe. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
All right, thank you all.
Thanks, Steve. Next is consent agenda. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight's consent agenda includes Item A, second reading and final approval of ordinance number 1226, implementing referred measure 2E of the 2018 Special Election of the City of Fort Morgan, redesignating the chief of police or equivalent titled position from a director reporting to the city manager to an appointed official reporting directly to city council, and authorization to publish by title only. Item B, approval of the disbursements and payroll for February, and Item C, approval of the minutes of the March 5, 2019, city council regular meeting. All matters on the consent agenda are considered routine business by the council and will be enacted with a single motion and a single vote by roll call. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is deemed necessary, that item should be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second. A resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Lisa Northrup. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is public comment or audience participation for items not on the agenda. Any of you gentlemen would speak?
Thank you.
Last chance. Reports by officials and staff.
Your Honor, we don't have a whole lot to report tonight. I don't think anybody had any specific things that they wanted to report, but we had a, wanted to thank counsel for the retreat we had last week. I think it was very good, informative for us to start working on 2020 budget. We're looking forward to that. And are there any concerns or issues that we need to address for the council tonight?
Well, I would just say, I think I would give kudos to all the first responders, our city and county staff that did a phenomenal job in our bomb cyclone. So I commend everybody that was out in that and taking care of things, so. In all honesty, I appreciate everything that they've all done, so.
And a thank you to all the constituents who followed the guidelines set forth by our law enforcement agencies to stay home and let things kind of settle before people went out. I think, you know, as a community, we kind of shined. We didn't have a lot of craziness and nonsense out there because people tried to best follow the recommendations.
Bids, meetings, and announcements. Mr. Brennan.
You can address counsel now, John. Sealed bids for a CNG refueling compressor until 4:00 PM on March 22nd, golf course rough mower until 3:00 PM on March 25th, a light-duty utility cart until 2:45 PM on March 25th, and upfitting of two police patrol vehicles until 3:00 PM on March 28th. Under meetings, the airport advisory board is scheduled to meet on the 20th tomorrow. That's rescheduled from last week, canceled by the storm. Planning Commission is scheduled to meet on March 25th at 4:30 PM here at City Hall. The Heritage Foundation meets at 4:00 PM on March 28th at the Museum Community Room, and the next regular city council meeting is at 6:00 PM here at City Hall on April 2nd. And tomorrow's the first day of spring.
Yes, it is.
No more winter.
Seeing nothing else come before the council, this meeting's adjourned.